Past 8:30 and we're in City Hall, Room 1010. And thank you for everybody who came real early to accommodate. Thank you very much. I'd like to first start with a general public comment. If there's anybody who'd like to speak, remember there's going to be general public comment and there's also going to be opportunity to speak on item number one. So if you wanted to speak on the tobacco issue, you could sign up for that. But for a public comment, could I get Mr. Herman and Wayne to come up?
I believe Mr. Spiller's not going to make it in. He's a little running late like Joe Blow just walked in right now. But we're good. This whole idea about what's going on with these e-cigarettes and tobacco, smokeless or not, you know, it's affecting all our lives. And it's a matter of time before more persons, health-wise, become sick. Are you going to run the clock yet? Become sick because, you know, you don't want me to absorb the whole two minutes by myself, which I can't. However, incidentally, the convenience and necessity of tobacco has been an issue all along. Back when non-vapor cigarettes came and you guys were all for it. Now you're going against it, regulating. I mean, I can't flip a coin and say what's heads or tails on this, but you lawmakers are becoming lawbreakers and that's the bottom line. It's offensive that you, at one point, at one time, didn't say, "No, let's stop this." No to drugs, Joe Blow. No to blow. All this stuff that can cause mental health and serious injury, morsel cancer among the Asians, among the Hispanics. What's going on? And more so, persons who are African-American, who are introduced to the drugs, Joe Blow, in our communities. Not in appearance, but the real shit, drugs, that impairs our lives and has dire consequences for convenience and necessity. So I'm the only speaker today, Mr. Herman, the advocate on behalf of Black Lives Matter. Look at this, one person. I'll give a shout-out to Mr. Spiller. But we're the only two fighting the rights of every advocate here today, those with mental health issues. How far does it go, Mr. O'Farrell? How far? I respect people with AIDS. I respect anyone who has a health condition. I worked with people six fucking years in a hospital dealing with this shit. So I know what the fuck I'm talking about, Joe Blow. I've been there. I know what it's like. I save lives. I'm a life giver. Keep putting alcohol in our neighborhoods and see how many times we end up in jail because of that.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Seeing no more cards, general public comment is over. And I'd like to move to item number one. Mr. CLA, could you read an item number one, please?
Item number one is motion Weezear Caretz, relative to a request from the city attorney to draft an ordinance to outlaw the use of smokeless tobacco at all venues in the city of Los Angeles where organized baseball is played, either amateur or professional, including but not limited to youth, school, and park leagues played at all city stadiums, parks, and venues. And the Arts Parks and River Committee waived consideration of this matter.
Thank you. And I'd like to start today where we'd like to welcome our fellow colleague, Councilmember Weezear, who I believe there's an amendment from Council District 14 to clarify the prohibition on smokeless tobacco products to apply to all sports stadiums and venues in the city. Councilman?
Good morning and thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for first, for hearing this important item today and for working with my office on some of the details. I also want to thank Vice Chair, Councilmember O'Farrell, for his efforts and for waiving it out of Parks Committee so we can have a robust discussion this morning and move this forward, hopefully today to the full council. And before I begin, as the chair mentioned, I would like to offer an amendment for your consideration. If you could introduce it today, it would be greatly appreciated. The city clerk has copies, but it opens up this ordinance to include all sports venues where organized sports is played. While baseball is the main target, it is certainly not the only area that smokeless tobacco is used. And we want as robust a law as possible, and this helps us achieve that. From the advice of the city attorney, we would like to modify the moving clause as follows. That the city attorney be requested to prepare and present an ordinance within 30 days to prohibit the use of smokeless tobacco products in all stadiums, sports fields, and playing areas within the city where all organized sports are played, either amateur or professional, including but not limited to youth, school, and park leagues. So if you could take that amendment under consideration.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we adopt Mr. Weezear's amendment.
Yes. Thank you, Councilman Weezear, for your leadership. There are no objections. I'd like to amend, per Councilman O'Farrell, and move the clauses to the motion to request the city attorney prepare and present an ordinance within 30 days to prohibit the use of smokeless tobacco products in all stadiums, sports fields, and playing areas within the city where all organized sports are played, either amateur or professional, including but not limited to youth, school, and park leagues. Did I get that correct?
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman.
And as I'm sure you are all aware, similar bans have been enacted in San Francisco and Boston. Los Angeles would be the third city, and this effort will not stop there. We need to get smokeless tobacco use out of baseball and other sports, and Los Angeles needs to be at the forefront of this effort. The Los Angeles Dodgers organization has a storied history of bringing positive changes to baseball that have implications well outside the world of sports. They are very supportive of this effort, and before the city council votes on this, they will issue a statement this morning at 9:30 outlining their full support. So we thank the Dodgers for recognizing the importance of this effort, and we certainly appreciate their support. When you look at great players like Tony Gwynn, one of the greatest players to ever play baseball, last summer, the Hall of Famer died at age 54 after a long battle with salivary gland cancer, which he attributed to his longtime use of chewing tobacco. Two months later, pitching great Curt Chilling, only 47, announced his treatment for oral cancer that he said was without a doubt unquestionably caused by 30 years of chewing tobacco. He recently spoke in support of the Boston effort and talked about how people hailed him as tough or playing in the World Series with a bloody ankle. He said the pain he was going through his cancer experience was infinitely more painful than anything he ever went through on the mound. And while some might say this is a personal choice and doesn't affect anybody but the user, I would respond that the science and studies show that that couldn't be more wrong. While smokeless tobacco use is down among high school students, it is alarmingly high among high school athletes. According to a report issued last week by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, high school athletes use smokeless tobacco at nearly twice the rate of non-athletes. And when you look at high school boy athletes, their use of this horrible habit is three times as high as other high school students. When we think of smokers and people using tobacco products, the last people we would naturally think of are athletes. By the very nature of their sports, running and competing at the high levels for optimum performance, it just doesn't make sense that tobacco use would be any part of that. And yet it is, particularly among young people. We need to change that dynamic. And that's because there is a culture in sports, particularly in baseball, where its use is promoted, encouraged, or worse, tolerated. There are definitely those in baseball, coaches, managers, ex-users, who are trying to change that. Our efforts would help support them. With three major cities and baseball venues aboard for smokeless tobacco ban, our vote will also send a strong message to Major League Baseball and the Players Union that the time to act is now, to sit down and make banning this archaic tradition, whose time has long passed, a priority. We don't need to watch anybody else die because of its use, and we don't need to see any more young people take up this potentially deadly habit. Smokeless tobacco use in the great American pastime is way past its time. It's time to move on and promote a more positive image for a game that so many people still love, myself included. Young kids want to be like their heroes, and if their favorite player is chewing tobacco, then some are going to follow in their footsteps, and nobody wants that. And the smokeless tobacco industry is not looking to relinquish that hold. They pump $435 million a year in advertisement dollars toward garnering new clients and keeping old ones. I can tell you this, there is no good that comes out of smokeless tobacco use in baseball, not for the players and not for the millions of kids who look up to them. So thank you so much for your consideration, and I urge you to listen to the experts here today. Ask whatever questions you need to ask, and let's move this forward for a full voting council and be part of what is becoming a national effort to knock tobacco out of the park. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Weezear, for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to start by opening the meeting to public comment on item number one of today's agenda. We'll provide two minutes. Mr. Herman?
Are these the only health risks involved with nicotine? There's always a reason why substance abuse is in our communities or in the city. The result is usually because elected officials badly made a choice to put more liquor stores in our neighborhoods where the density populates the need, the want. It's like a desire, you know? When you're really hungry for something, you go out and get it. And mainly in African-American communities, I've seen many times, multiple times, at liquor stores, on every corner, less than 10 feet from the next liquor store, everyone gets a permit-to-sell license for alcohol, cigarettes, tobacco, chewing tobacco. Boyle Heights is another area targeted by the convenience and necessity of this. People love to come into our communities and buy all these illegal killing machines that we toke in, Joe. It gets into your throat, into your lungs, and they have to make a hole. And in order to breathe, you have to take a slow, deep breath when smoking tobacco. Nicotine is a killer, Joe Blow. Didn't you know that? People want it, and the community don't want it. An advice from the CDC, a state-created danger by tobacco. This has been a problem, a state-created danger. Research have linked tobacco and its whereabouts to the communities that are poor. Poor people get more action for smoking, the same as convenience for alcohol and necessity. So stop the problem with all this. Cancer, anything that causes high blood pressure, addiction is addiction.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Could I call up Dr. Jessica Sims and Violet Ruiz from the American Heart Association and Primo Castro from the American Cancer Society? So we'll have Dr. Sims go first.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name's Jessica Sims. I'm coming to hear you here on behalf of the American Heart Association and also with a personal interest in seeing this pass. I've been a physician practicing primarily in the Los Angeles area approximately 15 years. I'm the mother of a small child and a public health advocate, recently graduated from Jonathan Fielding School of Public Health. And I also am an LA resident. So with that background, what I'd like to impress upon you is, youth are very impressionable. I see it in my everyday work environment. You see the cycles of poor health decision-making that get passed down generationally. You read the articles that show that behavioral imitation is a strong predictor of how people will behave throughout their entire life. And you can see it in the patients that come into the ER. You can see it in various members of the population. You read the articles. I see it in my own son. He imitates what he sees around him. And so I think it would be a great step forward to stop allowing this to impress upon young kids, so that they won't even have the opportunity to think about whether they want to chew tobacco or participate in other smokeless products. If you don't have it in front of them, they won't really think about it, and it'll be much easier to break that portion of the cycle. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Violet Ruiz. I'm the Government Relations Director for the American Heart Association, and we are in strong support of banning smokeless tobacco from organized baseball. I was actually in Boston last week, and I had the opportunity to spend time with my family and my two younger brothers, who are 13 and 11. They play organized sports, and it was a sense of pride to really provide this education for them and know that their city had taken a stand and set an example to make sure that there was not tobacco in any sort of organized sports in baseball. We strongly believe that the city of Los Angeles has a very important and crucial role to protect the public health of our youth and really make it the new norm that tobacco is no longer part of the game of baseball. Thank you.
Good morning, committee. Primo Castro, Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, also in strong support of this measure. One of the biggest things that we're seeing, obviously, is how the industry, the tobacco industry, is targeting our youth all across the nation. And one of our biggest priorities is ensuring that if we're going to be promoting health, if we're going to be promoting our next generation, you know, to become leaders, we need to go ahead and start, you know, taking tobacco, you know, out of the sports that they love, whether it's baseball or any of the other sports that they play here locally. We want to make sure that they grow up healthy, that they understand the value of importance and why tobacco shouldn't belong in the playing fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Seeing no other further public comment on this item, we'll move to the question and comments from committee. Could I get the city attorney, representatives from Tobacco Free Kids and health professionals in the room? And for the record, I'd like to recognize, we're privileged to have Dr. Jonathan Fielding. Please join us, too. Who is the former director of the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. I forgot to pull up another chair. And who is now distinguished professor at the UCLA Fielding School of Public Health, which is named after him. Thank you, Dr. Fielding, for being here.
Thank you so much.
So, city attorney, can you give us a brief overview?
Good morning, councilmembers. David Michelson with the city attorney's office. Here with me is my colleague, Richard Kim. Our pleasure to be here today. As I think most folks know, the city attorney, Mike Fuer, has a very, a long history of aggressively assisting in tobacco-related legislation to try to protect the youth. This particular motion for you today calls upon our office within 30 days to prepare and transmit an ordinance that would ensure that within the city of Los Angeles, smokeless tobacco products are not to be used in any sports arena, both at the professional level, amateur level, in our Wrenton Parks facilities. We will be pleased to bring that back. There is state legislation working its way through Sacramento. We do not believe that council will be preempted, so we think you've got a clear path to move forward on this local legislation, and we will be pleased if it's adopted by full council to present it timely. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Great. Tobacco Free America, would you like to add anything?
Sure, and I apologize. We had expected to offer remarks this morning, so I will try to make them more brief because I get the sense that we're trying to move this along. My name is Kevin O'Farrell. I work for the campaign for Tobacco Free Kids. I'm helping to lead our effort to knock tobacco out of the park, and thank you for giving me a few minutes here this morning. And we've witnessed for a long time the impact that smokeless tobacco use by ballplayers has on our nation's youth, as you're hearing from medical professionals and from the folks from the different voluntary organizations, and you will hear in a moment. You know, ballplayers aren't just indulging in a harmless habit here. They're damaging their own health, but more importantly, they're serving as role models to youth across the country and endangering the well-being of those kids. This admiration and idolization of ballplayers means that they end up being powerful marketers for our kids. A recent study from UCSF documented that, and I have some packets of information that have that study, as well as the recent CDC study that you can look over. I'm happy to submit to you today. Over the last 15 years, we have made dramatic progress reducing smoking rates among our kids, cutting cigarette use among high school boys by more than half. But during the same period, there's been virtually no progress in reducing the use of smokeless tobacco in that same group, especially among those who participate in sports. We're cutting smoking in half, but smokeless use is the same, and sadly, baseball shares some of the blame for that. You know, we know that tobacco companies, as was mentioned earlier, spend over $1 million a day on marketing, but that doesn't begin to take into account the hundreds of millions of dollars of free advertising that the tobacco industry gets when ballplayers use this product on TV. It reinforces the industry's message that real men dip and chew. So every game, every fan that's in the stands, every television set, every child that sees this real-life product endorsement, unfortunately, also sees it being inextricably linked to heroic on-field actions of their idols. And while we all care about the health of our players, make no mistake, this campaign is about our children, their health and future. We think baseball is a great sport, and sports are great for kids. We want our kids to get hooked on baseball, but we don't want our kids to get hooked on tobacco. So we're proud to join Councilmember Weezear and other leading health advocates in support of this legislation. Curt Chilling, Tony Gwynn have been mentioned before. Few people understood the full impact of the dangerous relationship between baseball and tobacco, as well as Tony did and Curt does. And Curt stood with the mayor of Boston just a month ago, introducing this ordinance and indicating his strong support, making it clear that he would never have started using tobacco if baseball players hadn't been when he was a kid. So our campaign is making great progress and gaining momentum, but we really do want Los Angeles to join Boston and San Francisco and become the third city in the nation with this comprehensive policy. The Dodgers are an iconic franchise, just like the other two, and we really, we think that Los Angeles moving forward on this can get us closer to our goal, which is a national pastime, free of this ugly addiction. A healthy game with healthier kids who no longer associate tobacco use of any kind with their heroes. We believe we can make that history with your help. Thank you very much.
Anybody else from Tobacco Free Kids?
So I think Dr. Fielding had a few comments he wanted to make, and Dr. Ong as well.
Thank you very much, Chairman Rue and Vice Chair O'Farrell. Pleasure to be with you. I did serve for 16 years as Director of Public Health and Health Officer for LA County, which includes very prominently LA City. And you're going to hear a great deal today about the link between smokeless tobacco and baseball. And what's really important is, I think, to try and eliminate this at all venues for all organized sports, so I'm very supportive of Councilman Weezear's amendment to this. But let's just look at the health effects of this terrible product in terms of health. The Surgeon General, the Public Health Service, and the National Cancer Institute have all concluded that smokeless tobacco products are addictive and called serious disease, including cancer. In fact, smokeless tobacco contains at least 28 cancer-causing chemicals. The International Agency for Research on Cancer and the National Toxicology Program have concluded that tobacco is a human carcinogen. Now, smokeless tobacco, as we've heard some terrible cases highlighted, causes oral cancer, which can require very disfiguring surgery and very painful treatment. Esophageal cancer and pancreatic cancer, which is an especially deadly form of cancer. The use of smokeless tobacco is also associated with precancerous lesions in the mouth, gum recessions, other gum disease, and tooth decay as well. So we know the harms. They've been pretty well established. We're not talking about a harmless habit, and we're talking about the use of something that is deadly and destructive for the fabric of society and the fabric of our collective health. And the key reason we're here today is that athletes, particularly ballplayers, but not limited to them, who use smokeless tobacco not only endanger their own health, but they endanger the healths and future lives and longevity of the kids that idolize them. That's the basic facts, and we know that too well. A recent report by the University of California at San Francisco School of Dentistry highlighted the impact of professional athletes using smokeless tobacco on adolescent athletes. It makes clear that kids see athletes as their role models, and when baseball stars use smokeless tobacco, the kids are much more likely to use them. That's the state of the data and the research. Among the findings, I'll quote just one very short sentence or two. Professional and college athletes provide a powerful model for boys and young men to use smokeless tobacco by legitimizing chewing and dipping as an integral part of being a successful athlete. And the high levels of smokeless tobacco use observed in the college and professional ranks are mirrored among adolescent athletes. Just last week, as Councilman Weezear mentioned, the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, released a new report that high school athletes use smokeless tobacco at nearly twice the rate of non-athletes. It's 11.1% compared to 5.9% among the non-athletes. And among male high school athletes, the rate of smokeless tobacco use is 17.4%. So the stakes are high. Each year, about 535,000 kids aged 12 to 17 use smokeless tobacco for the first time, and we just need to stop this as a form of tobacco use. You can take a very important step by not only hitting smokeless tobacco out of baseball parks, but taking it out of venues where all organized sports are played, from the kids when they're young to the athletes that are professional. You are doing something that's very important. Again, I support Councilman Weezear's amendment. This is really a great milestone. Thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Dr. Fielding. You know, this is a long time coming, and I remember as a child, I didn't play baseball, but I chewed Big League Chew to emulate. Yeah. And, you know, it's important that we hold our professional athletes accountable when it comes to protecting our children's and neighborhoods. They are our role models. Whether they like it or not, and everything they do and say, just like myself chewing the bubble gum, is idolized by the young people who aspire to be just like them. Issues of health and well-being aren't just the purview of this committee. I think I speak for all members around the table when I say that this is an issue that's near and dear to our hearts. When we all swore our oath to serve the residents of our district, we swore to serve and protect the most vulnerable amongst us, and that includes children. It's our duty to make sure that we protect the future athletes from the pitfalls of tobacco use, so a Trojan could go on to live happy, healthy lives. And I'm happy to announce that in the next couple of hours, the Dodgers will be releasing a statement in support of what we're doing here today. With that said, Mr. City Attorney, I have a few questions. First question is, if smokeless tobacco products are currently allowed in any business, are they currently allowed in any business establishments or venues in the city?
I think they are currently allowed in certainly the majority of public spaces in the city. The city is, through its police powers, authorized to enact legislation to address that issue, and that's what's before you today.
Okay. So when is it anticipated that this ordinance will be finalized?
I believe the motion calls upon our office to prepare and present the ordinance within 30 days. We will be pleased to do so. We will expedite it. Once it gets back to full council, and if full council adopts that prepared ordinance, absent an urgency clause, it'll take 40 to 50 days before it becomes law. With an urgency clause, it could occur even faster.
Great. So we should, pending, we don't see anything going wrong, which should be well before next year's baseball season?
Absolutely, councilmember, absolutely.
Great. Colleagues?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Fielding and the city attorney's office, American Cancer Society, Heart Association, Councilman Weezear and Caretz for your leadership and participation on this particular issue, but also, Dr. Fielding, city attorney's office, for your incredible work early last year in helping to enact the regulation of e-cigarettes, exactly like we do tobacco. And that was a battle, was not easy, but I think that since that time, we've turned the corner as a society, and now the e-cigarettes are being regulated in many cities and in many state government regulations coming in too, in many instances. In terms of smokeless tobacco, and as I'm listening to you, Councilman Weezear, about the Dodgers supporting this, I'm so glad that they're going to be taking an active role in this, and I'm hoping that they will even help in the public service announcement arena in relation to visiting teams. And perhaps when there is a game that's televised or heard on the radio, they can actually talk about the dangers of smokeless tobacco and how it is no longer allowed in any stadium or any public facility across the city. And I'll be engaging in a conversation with them to see if they can help educate, which kind of brings me to the enforcement piece. In terms of signage, enforcement, et cetera, I know that in recreation of parks, it's going to be up to park management to, you know, get the word out that smokeless tobacco is not allowed and that our existing policing forces will deal with the enforcement should it become necessary. I have a sense that a lot of it will be self-policing by organization and all that, but if push does come to shove, let's talk about the actual enforcement of it, and then signage. Will there be signage in our recreation of parks facilities and the costs associated with that? So in other words, just costs with signage and the enforcement piece. Mr. Michelson, would you like to take a stab at that?
Yes, thank you. The draft- The draft ordinance that we prepare can address signage issue, the signage issue with respect to private sports facilities as well, and so we will be pleased to look into that issue and do what we can to incorporate that into the draft. With respect to enforcement, this ordinance will go into the law, to the city's municipal code. So, if the ordinance is silent as to enforcement or the ramification for violating the law, it would actually be considered a misdemeanor. Council may prefer it to be an infraction. We can look at both those options and report to council and have council in a position to decide with respect to the sanction, which paths to follow.
And I would recommend, with respect to leagues that lease out ballfields, the adult leagues, that perhaps we put language, insert language in the ordinance that results in suspension for known and tolerated use of smokeless tobacco in our parks facilities, so that we can actually pull the permit if an adult league refuses to, you know, do some, do their own self-enforcing. So, if we could take a look at that, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, we will be pleased to do so. We'll work with the Wreckin' Parks Department as to, as to that issue.
Terrific. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank the leadership of colleagues here, Mr. Ru, Mr. O'Farrell, of course, Mr. Huizar, for proposing this ordinance that's before us today. I, for one, can tell, can tell, I, for one, can tell you that from personal experience that professional athletes have a tremendous impact on our youth. Growing up in the city, I idolized Mike Socia from the Dodgers. Not only was he Italian, but he was also a catcher. I caught my entire baseball career in, in Little League fields and city recreation and parks, and later on, of course, in, in high school. I never once touched a smokeless tobacco, and it's because I never remember seeing Mike Socia either here at Dodger Stadium or on TV chewing tobacco. So, I know the impacts of, of these athletes have on our kids today. Though I support this ordinance before us, I like, Mr. O'Farrell, do you have some concerns and some questions about the enforcement piece? Now, I don't want this to be a symbolic ordinance. Local governments tend to enact a number of ordinances without providing the adequate funding for enforcement. I'd like to hear more maybe from the City Attorney. I know this is a funding issue, but Recreation and Parks, will they be at, at council later? Do we know?
They'll be at council. But this, but they'll be back, though, after they make the ordinance, they should come back.
They'll come back with it. Again, just like going back to when the council years ago banned gas leaf blowers. Today, in the City of Los Angeles, I still see gas leaf blowers. In my local park, my son today will have his first football, flag football practice. So, if I see a father chewing and spitting tobacco at our local park, you know, we need to be able to be armed with the enforcement piece. Then, education piece moving forward is going to be critical. Move, and I, you know, again, I echo Mr. O'Farrell's concerns about ensuring that we educate the people in the City of Los Angeles and also have the adequate funding for enforcement, so that we're serious about this ordinance. Again, this should not only be a symbolic ordinance when you move forward to make sure that we have an enforcement arm in place as we move forward. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Again, I'd really like to thank the leadership of Councilmember Jose Huizar, the work at the City Attorney, Tobacco-Free Kids, Dr. Jonathan Fielding, the American Heart Association, the American Cancer Society, for all the efforts that you put in. And yes, we look forward to seeing the ordinance that the City Attorney's gonna draft, but, you know, I think this is the first step, especially educational component. In other cities, we know that from Tobacco-Free Kids, you guys worked with athletes to do public service announcements. I mean, I think it's a whole lifestyle change where we need to hold our athletes accountable, our professional athletes accountable. So, with that said... Oh, you have another question?
If I can, Mr. Chair, do we have any input from the, the Players' Union for Major League Baseball? Do we know where they stand on this? Do we know where Major League Baseball in general stands on this?
So, I can tell you that in the other cities, when these have been introduced, the Players' Association has said no comment. They have not made a formal statement on this. In general, I think that within the league, they see this as something that would be addressed during collective bargaining, and we presume that in the end, when this comes out of the game, as we hope that it will, that is where it will be addressed, but they have not weighed in, in any city campaigns to do this. I think they realize that this is coming. I don't think that they have sort of a, they have a dog in this hunt, but I don't think they see it in their best interest to, to weigh in one way or the other.
So, of course, the, the Los Angeles Dodgers will be announcing in support of this ordinance. They're, they're acting as a sole, they're acting on their own on support of, of this ordinance.
That's right. And we've been, you know, as we've approached this, this has been a multi-year effort for us. We started this campaign six years ago with the help of almost 20 national health organizations. At first, it was really just a PR campaign to bring it to the league and the players' attention, but as we've, you know, entered the policy arena to try to address this problem, we've been very clear that this isn't about the players versus the owners or that contract at all. This is about protecting kids, and that's why we're, we're here bringing you the science showing that the use by the players is impacting these kids, that it has a tremendous impact on whether they ever start using this product and become addicted to it, and that's what we think you should base your action on. So, I just kind of wanted to be, be clear in that regard.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good question. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, I'd like to move to approve item number one as amended. Have a second?
Second.
Second it, but Councilman Puskano, so moved. There are no business before us, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.